Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
I would like to call this informational meeting of Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, to order. Our first order of business is committee reports. We did have an audit committee yesterday, and I'll give that report. The three main topics yesterday were the update from the external audit by Heidi Bailey, some of the new regulations that are coming down they approached, and how their overview works for them. So they did that, and it was greatly appreciated. Then we moved on to the annual risk assessment presented by the internal audit staff. And the last thing of business was the 2022 proposed audit plan. Discuss the audits that are ongoing and the ones that are upcoming. Those things are online. That was adopted by a voice vote, and there was no dissension. At this time, they're open for council remarks. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. I don't know if everybody had a chance or not to watch the budget address today, but there was some good stuff in there, and I'm super excited for the opportunity for our city with all the housing funds. There's a bunch of water money in there. I mean, there's just, there's a whole bunch of stuff. A lot of it is matching funds, and so obviously the city and/or the businesses will have to pony up some money as well to make that money go further, which I think is nice to have some skin in the game. So I'm sure we'll be getting a lot more information as we move forward, and it's all dependent upon what passes the legislature. But if you haven't had a chance, it's fairly brief. Please go watch. There's also two things. I guess I'll mention those two things, as well as they're adding some additional funds for healthcare workers, as well as teachers through the pandemic. There was a lot to talk about that. And then also, one of the things that I found kind of fascinating, that they're adding, I think it's $3 million for a new human trafficking agent that will combat that, and I'm sure work closely with our PD as well as all law enforcement. There's a lot of money in there for law enforcement and recruiting folks to do that as well. So again, if you hadn't had the opportunity, please go watch it. It's not very long. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have an accessible housing board meeting last week. There's a lot of meat on that bone. Instead of trying to do a quick two-minute little synopsis, I'm going to have Director Eckhoff is going to come in, I think, next week, a week, next week or so, and really kind of get into it and get everybody updated, and we'll all have a pretty good discussion on it. I thought that might be a good way to go about that, instead of kind of doing what we're doing and jamming it into about a minute and a half. So we'll look forward to that. It's been productive.
Thank you.
You met?
Other council members' remarks? Seeing none, we'll move into our first presentation, engineering design standard updates by the engineering staff. I know we've all been looking forward to this as long as it's been on our agenda. This is exciting.
Good afternoon, council. Andy Berg, City Engineer with Public Works. Thank you for the time this afternoon. Got some engineering design standard updates for you. There are four different chapters that we are updating at this time. Chapters four, eight, 11, and 15. Majority of the revisions, as is much of the time, are not substantial. There are clarifications or updating references, that type of thing. We'll step through some of the ones that do have some change that affects the designs as we move forward. And then also, updates in chapters eight, 11, and 15 do include implementing some of the recommendations that came from the annexation task force report that came out in 2017. Our timeline, we have been through the infrastructure review and advisory board, IRAB, with recommended approval from that group for all these chapters. Tonight, we're bringing this forward to the informational. Next Tuesday, we'll be bringing it to the regular council meeting, hopefully for your approval. And then, design standards will become effective on January of '22. Chapter four, utility locations and city utility easements. So the, the change in this chapter is related to private streets, city utilities in private streets. As we've seen more and more installation of private streets in some of our developments, we felt it was time to update our standards to spell out the specifics for those areas where there are public utilities under those private streets. So the, the changes in this chapter involve the identifying the separation required between the utilities, 10-foot of separation between sanitary and water, and then the associated easement widths that go with those, 20-foot for each of them. However, there can be that overlap. So it spells out how we want to see that easement width as it relates to a private street, so that when those public utilities are in there, it gives us the ability to perform regular operations and maintenance of those utilities. We still do have a provision in there that allows for private utilities to go under those private streets where they are not serving anyone upstream. It's solely serving that private development or in a gated community where we would not have access to them. Chapter eight, we had a few more changes. I'll step through real quickly, but different sections listed out here, access permits. We are no longer requiring those for approved quarter-mile locations. We still will require them from non-standard areas where somebody's requesting something that doesn't meet our quarter, half, three-quarter spacing. On major collectors, we did reduce the speed on that from 30 to 25 to meet what our ordinance states. We removed the language "continuous" for two or more miles, as this was becoming an issue where a lot of subdivisions due to whatever constraints, wetlands, that type of thing, they aren't always contiguous, two-mile stretches or more. And so there are many cases where we designate something as a major or minor collector that is not meeting that standard. So we've taken that out. That's more of an engineering judgment for staff. Clarifying also that multifamily construction across from RD1 zoning is a major collector designation for street width. And then the street width themselves in major collectors has changed from 41-foot back a curb to back a curb to 39-foot. And that is consistent with the requirement for a minor collector. Minor collector, we also removed that same "continuous for two or more miles" language. And then we, through a lot of discussion at the IRAB group, we did go to a change in this designation where we will allow up to an RD1 zoning on both sides of the street or across from single family. It can still be a minor collector. In the past, we had required that being a major collector with that on both sides of the road. So this allows for things up to fourplexes on one, on those two sides of the road where minor collector right-of-way widths and street widths would be required, rather than going up to the major collector. Traffic lane widths, we changed it to 11-foot traffic lane width for a minimum standard. We still do allow for reduced lane widths in areas where we are working to try and establish a traffic calming measure, which you've seen throughout the city where we've done that in places. So still allows for that to be done. But 11-foot is being established as our standard lane width. Bicycle paths are being changed to shared-use paths. As, as the name changes in this section, basically just complement the ADA accessibility guidelines that the Federal Highway Administration has provided comments on. Pedestrian traffic, this section was clarified to say pedestrian accommodations through work zones. It deals with traffic control, how those traffic control devices are set up per ADA guidance in federal highway. Basically, just some language cleanup and some clarification on how we want to see those areas signed during construction so that pedestrians have safe passage. Eight fourteen, minimum street requirements for annexation of existing developments. This section is added to reflect those changes I mentioned before from the annexation task force, where minimum street width of 24-foot, 26-foot fire hydrants is required. And then the surfacing requirements, the local streets may be gravel, and then the collectors shall be asphalt surface with a minimum of four inches of asphalt in those areas. Chapter 11, we had one change to this chapter under the sump pump collection system segment that is also related to the annexation task force report, basically spelling out that existing rural subdivisions annexed after January of 2018 are not required to have a collection system installed with the annexation unless it's either included in an agreement or required by the city engineer based on benefits or needed mitigation of a discharge nuisance in that area. And then chapter 15, roadway lighting, also in annexation report recommendation. Same thing here, existing rural subdivisions annexed after '18 are not required, sorry, are not required to have streetlights installed unless agreed to in an agreement. So I went through those fairly quickly, but to elaborate just a little bit on this, we, we feel these changes do reflect feedback we've heard from IRAB. Some of the discussion we had was about the street widths, right-of-way widths, that type of thing. And so some of the changes we've made have allowed for denser uses along a narrower road, rather than going to that major collector width. So, and likewise with the private utilities under, I'm sorry, public utilities under private roads. It allows some flexibility to possibly go with a narrower street, narrower right-of-ways in those areas. So promoting some of that density and hopefully not, and hopefully leaning towards some more affordable solutions for the developers. So I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Kiley.
Thank you. The, real quickly, changing 11-feet width from minimum to standard, that doesn't mean you, and it does address that you could go narrower for traffic calming situations. Doesn't prohibit you from going wider either if you, for some reason, were to see fit to do that.
Right. It's simply setting it as a standard. Engineering could allow either direction based on the situation.
Well, thank you. Actually, I like that, that wording better because we addressed it here just two weeks ago when somebody was talking about, we're just meeting minimum standards, and, and they meant it in a critical way. Yet they are basically our, our standard for the situation. So I do, I do like that. Now, you address, in the annexation task force, you, you address the street requirements. But I, I think there's some other areas related to engineering standards that, that need to be addressed, too. These, for these rural infrastructure standards, water service requirements were addressed by the, the task force. Minimum eight-inch water line, provide adequate fire protection, you know, fire hydrants. After services available and noticed, notices received in the city connection, the city water service must be made within two years. That's just one that I don't see addressed here. Sanitary sewer system requirements are another, and there's a couple of bullets under that. Drainage requirements, sidewalk requirements, streetlight requirements, and sump pump system requirements. So there were about seven different policies there that came out of the annexation task force that I don't see six of those seven addressed.
Okay. Off the top of my head, I don't know why we would have skipped those. I'm wondering if they aren't addressed in some way, shape, or form through our current standards. I'll have to get back to you on that, and I'll bring, I'll bring that forward in our, our presentation next week. And obviously, I'll let you know ahead of time.
And I could have Jim provide you with a, with a copy of what, I'm, I'm just working, the City of Sioux Falls 2017 annexation task force.
We've, we've got a copy.
Yeah. So if, yeah, if you want to look, what I was addressing is on page seven and eight.
Okay.
Of that report. So if they have been addressed already in your standards and updated, because I think maybe in a previous meeting, you said some were, some were not.
Yeah, I believe that's the case. I don't, I can't say with certainty right now, so I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. So if you could just let me know, and then if there are any that have not been addressed, could we bring those forward for our first reading? And we'll consider them addressed during this informational.
It's a, it's a resolution, so I believe it's just one reading, but yeah, we would look to add that. Yep.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. Same question I ask every single time, so sorry in advance, but talk to me about what we are increasing in fees, or not fees. How much is getting passed along to the developer when we have these regulations? So are, and maybe it's none, maybe we're saving money. I don't know. I'm just asking, you know, if we are requiring extra regulations, what's the price tag, plus or minus?
I don't have an exact number. The changes we are proposing in here, though, feel we are allowing narrower roadway widths and multiple.
So cost savings?
Yeah, cost savings, specifically that minor collector piece with allowing the RD1 zoning on both sides. You know, folks are, a lot of people are doing the twin homes or fourplexes out there now. That was triggering a major collector, which goes to 80-foot of right-of-way width and a wider, or I think this back-to-back was the same. But allowing that to be a minor collector knocks that right-of-way width down to 66, so it allows more developable property in those areas. And then the other one was the private streets. You know, more people are doing that. We want to accommodate that with this language we propose, which also allows for that narrower street, so less pavement.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'll, I'll go through it, too, to see if there's anything that draws attention. But I ask it every single time when we bring a regulation change forward, so, and I will for the next five months. One question that I have for design standards, and I don't know if it's within this particular chapter or not, but I would ask maybe, do you take a quick look at, is we have family park. It's not annexed, but we allow gravel roads, which, in my opinion, is awesome. It is kind of a rule, kind of a different area, and it protects the integrity of, like, not driving a, I mean, you're out in wilderness. You don't want concrete out there. We don't need concrete everywhere. I like that personally, but I don't know that we technically allow for it. And if we were to annex it, it would trigger all of that concrete to be done. I have about 2 million other things I would like to spend $2 million on.
Right.
Other than concrete. So I would like to see something like that addressed, and if it's not this time, certainly before May. So we can talk more about it. And it may fit in here, maybe it won't. But I just think that we should protect that so it's not triggered at that point. And to be honest, it needs to be annexed because the city owns it, and it touches all city property. And so we should, and I, I don't know if that was talked about in the annexation task force or not, or a recommendation, but that's something I think of, of interest, and I can bring it if I need to, too. So.
So annexation of a property and whether that would trigger going from gravel to paved.
Right.
Okay.
And having some sort of flexibility that we don't have to pave it. I don't want to see, me personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but I don't want to see it paved. I think it looks great.
Yep. We, this may not speak specifically to it, but on, on chapter eight, for the annexation piece, we added surfacing requirements, local streets may be gravel.
Okay.
And so that would allow it, as long as they're not deemed a collector street where they're carrying.
And they're not, yeah.
Right.
Okay. So next steps really is, is getting that land annexed.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions, councilors? Seeing none. Thank you very much. I know we're all following this very closely. Look forward to your presentation at the regular council meeting. Now we'll move on to the 2021 crime trends and statistics. Police chief is here.
Just get my technical support on there. I've learned a lot about engineering today, too, so that's good. But again, public safety update, and this is a recap of what was presented at the end of November at a press conference at City Hall, which just came about primarily from, since my becoming chief, I've done a lot of speaking engagements and fielding a lot of questions about crime rates and trends in Sioux Falls. And then after conversations, we wanted to present that to the, the media and the public a little bit before our annual meeting and probably go to a biannual format with this crime information data. And again, these numbers are through October, as that's press conferences in November. But I have a few number updates now that November is complete. So with that public safety update, we never miss an opportunity to talk about the Public Safety Training Center, which we broke ground with in November, and again, excited about the prospect and the opportunity that this brings and the public safety components for our community. Again, good shot of the groundbreaking and another great time. This public safety complex stands as a symbol of the community's support and this council's support and the mayor's support for this project. And again, great event and excited to, to bring this to the public's attention once again. Moving on to the statistics at hand, and really, this is again through October. Again, we'll do another update in the first quarter of next year that kind of is a summation of 2021. But again, we see our homicide rates through 2021 through October substantially less. And again, the crime information, the questions we were fielding from the public was that somehow the conception was that these crime trends were spiraling upwards pretty rapidly. Again, through November, we had three homicides in November, which brings that up to six, which is still about half of what we had the year before. So again, we're seeing positive trends in this area, but also keep in mind that this is one crime that has so many unique facets to it, especially for the certain circumstances we saw in November that really are sometimes outside of the spectrum of our control. But again, promising numbers nonetheless. Again, going to sexual assaults, we're again seeing a leveling off or not a huge substantial increase as they are down substantially again and kind of maintaining. We take all these trend lines and go against our population trend line and really are looking for growth that's not outside of that population growth as well. Again, very encouraging numbers here with aggravated assaults, as we see a downward trend in both aggravated assaults, but also worth of note, domestic aggravated assaults. Again, a good opportunity for us to talk about our partnerships with our local partners, the Children's Inn, Compass Center, Call to Freedom, who really I think we're seeing the work of different community groups impact those numbers, especially after COVID, where we saw some of those numbers kind of go upward within 2020. So again, promising numbers and things that we're encouraged to, to see. Simple assaults as well, leveling off or kind of going against the trend line of our upward growth, which again, wanted to look at as a positive sign that we again are, are maintaining more of a, a sustained growth as opposed to a rapid spike in these numbers. Robberies as well, down through October, and again, those numbers are maintaining again through November, not seeing a spike or anything that would cause us any general alarm. Burglaries as well, we are seeing these trend upwards a little bit. You can offer any theory that you want, including 2020, most people spent a bunch of time at home, so there was less opportunity. But again, these numbers that were growth we're seeing is within that trend line or that, that sustained growth of our community, and nothing that causes us too much concern. I will again talk about this. Stolen vehicles are skyrocketing rapidly and showing no signs of slowing down. Again, I mentioned this in the press conference, the previous two updates I received on Monday from crimes over the weekend. One was 19 stolen vehicles, of which 18 had their keys left in them, and one was a trailer. The following weekend was nine stolen vehicles, of which eight had their keys left in them. And then from this past weekend, similar numbers and trends as well. And this is a number that we directly control as residents of this city, especially when we are handing opportunity out on a regular basis. We're going to work on a marketing campaign. You know, it's 10 o'clock, do you know where your kids are? Now it's 10 o'clock, do you know where your keys are? Or something along that line. We'll let the marketing geniuses work up something there, but we should start pushing that out on social media and really just start a practice amongst our community of really taking in an evening account of where the keys to our vehicles are. Because the reality is, is that these vehicles end up being used in crimes. We see unsecured firearms within these vehicles that get turned into the general population for use. And again, something that we directly control as a community. Larcenies, again, slightly upward, but nothing too far out of the trend line that causes us major concern. Vandalisms are down, again, positive trend line. And then on to the other topic that's really important to note. We have a record amount of fentanyl seized this year. Again, strong work by our, our task force, which is made up of Sioux Falls Police, Minnehaw County Department of Criminal Investigation, and some federal partners, and they have absolutely done an outstanding job this year with record seizures of fentanyl. Methamphetamine as well, approaching record numbers seized this year for methamphetamine. Again, a strong testament to the work of our law enforcement agency and our partners. But that is coupled with this reality, is that while seizures are at an all-time high, our overdose deaths are also at an all-time high with 26 through October. A little bit of somewhat positive news is we made it through November without another death. So we're still sitting at 26 overdose deaths, and we're seeing a combination of both fentanyl and methamphetamine responsible for these deaths. Narcan uses, again, we had broke a record, but we're now at 51 known narcan uses by our officers. And again, overdose now for the year are at 73. So again, we're approaching record levels from 2019 that I hope we don't be, but we have a month to go. Bring this to your attention because again, despite record seizures, there is still a lot of people dying. And each one of those 26 people on that list have names and families behind them. And again, just goes to the effort that we have to go with our community partners and appealing to people to really understand the implication of using these illegal street drugs and what they result in. But again, something we'll constantly be working on, and again, need partnership with the community to really make an impact. Further updates, we have been running a marketing campaign to help deal with some of our staffing. If you look at our, our recruiting webpage, it's been revamped and pretty excited with the results that our communications team has come up with, along with, along with the police department. Updating these numbers with the recent hiring class, we are now 272 officers of our authorized strength of 280 right now, of which about 23 are in some form of training and moving through, through the ranks. Again, we have four more authorized positions in 2022, which will bring it up to 284, but also have multiple people we're lining up for a February hiring class, which should help us get very close to that full staffing number. Again, we look at applicants, the trends through the past three years. In 2019, the majority of our applicants coming from South Dakota. We have seen a gradual and substantial trend in 2021 of applicants coming from out of state. We look at a lot of different factors on this, and one is really Sioux Falls has been identified as a community that supports its law enforcement, understands the mission, and sees a high priority in that, that, and I think that's a testament to our, our city government and our community that again, when other states were defunding law enforcement, our state was doing the opposite and putting emphasis on that. And other people have started to recognize that from the, around the country. And again, seeing other trends within our market of people relocating to Sioux Falls for a variety of vocations. This is another one we're seeing as well. Again, we've also seen an increase in certified officers from other states that are applying with us. In 2019, again, 19%, 2020, 12%, but now in 2021, 40% of the applicants we're seeing are certified officers, either from from out of state or nearby. Again, it's important to stress that we do not compromise our, our standards. We hold our reputation very high, and this has been earned, not given by the community that we serve. And again, I think the question comes up, if people are coming here from other states, yes, they're receiving strong vetting, and they will fall into our culture and how we do things here locally. And I think that's important to stress, that we will not compromise our, our integrity, our standards for the sake of numbers. As I've said, I'd rather work with less people, as long as they're the right people, than work with the wrong ones. And we owe that to the community. Again, here's an example of some of the ads we've been running, both on a search engine and in other social media fields. And really, it's in a trial process to really evaluate, are these impactful? Are these bringing us the right applicants? And are we, are we confident with the results they're giving us? And just an example of some of the stuff that our communications team has put together, and I'm a little bit biased, but I think they look pretty sharp. And I think they'll capture people's attention and hopefully keep that pipeline going. Because as we know, keeping us staffed is a challenge, and we'll, we need to keep our foot on the gas, so to speak, to make sure we keep that up. And speaking with an applicant today who had come to town from a different community, he said one of the main things that, as he did his research, was obviously the community itself, but the quality of our new recruiting website and the ease of information which, which he could gather. And again, it's a good point to, to bring up our collaboration that we, as a city, we are law enforcement officers, and we are, are very fortunate to have a communications team and a marketing team that can meet us and really, really maximize our efforts as far as reaching out and finding the right applicants. And again, these are all in constant evaluation, and we have to judge the effectiveness and make modifications as needed. So a pretty quick synopsis, and we'll hit again in the first quarter as far as full crime trends throughout the year in 2021. But I'd be happy to field any questions you may have at this time.
I'm sure there's going to be some questions. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You look vaguely familiar. I feel like our paths have crossed a time or two.
I've seen you a bit lately. Your facial hair is looking better.
Thank you. I'm getting compliments on my, cleaning it up. So I like the marketing campaigns. So I like the marketing campaigns. I remember at the law enforcement dinner, the governor had talked about a national campaign that we had run something to the effect of trying to get officers and that from other parts of the country. And that has led to an influx of that, too. Are we seeing some of that with these numbers?
Our governor's been a strong supporter of law enforcement and has made a very public vocal platform. And I would say in 2022, we weren't quite seeing the out of state applicants that kind of we anticipated based on what we were hearing kind of nationally. However, in 2021, we've definitely seen that influx in applicants from around the country. And I think again, that's a testament to the sustained support of law enforcement within the state and with this this community, not to mention with our messaging and kind of making sure that we're putting out the right information and making ourselves accessible as a department for potential applicants.
So of the 19 that are in training, I think that's what one of the numbers was, how soon before they'll be active and in the force?
Which is a good question because of that 15 are fresh or academy recruits, which require 17 weeks of field training. Another four were hired in November, which again, were fresh recruits, which will require some more training. And then the four hired yesterday are certified officers, which go through an accelerated process and to make sure that we get them up to speed, but then also give them the field training and and time necessary to learn our policies and procedures, state laws and make sure they're in line with with how they police and give them time to acclimate. So it it really is from if you hire a brand new officer, it's about nine months until they count as a standalone number. Whereas a certified officer, we can cut that many times in half because they don't need the academy level training that they're provided. So we're looking at ways in previous years, we've only done three hiring groups throughout a year where we're limited by what the state academy had for us in positions. This simply became non-sustainable as our demands as a metro area increased. They've allowed us to run our own academy here when needed, which we just had academy graduation a couple of weeks ago with 18 officers, 15 from Sioux Falls, one from Brandon, one from Lincoln County, one from Minnehaha County. And that hiring ability with our own academy, along with hiring these core certified officers, we can now do five roughly hires throughout the year, which will maximize our potential to put people on the streets.
Great. My last thing would be, you know, it does appear in a number of areas and you sound optimistic. I mean, any numbers are too high in some of these categories, but it does seem like a number are down a bit from the year before. So am I reading that right? Are you optimistic about overall kind of what we're seeing and we're keeping up the best we can?
That's kind of what brought this to light is just the overall realization of what the stats were telling us and measuring it against the trend line of our growth. If you look at our calls for service at our city's population, they kind of run parallel like train tracks as one goes up, the other goes up along with it. And we're trying to identify any spikes or anomalies that would show growth outside of that trend line. And I think what we're seeing here is especially a decrease in some of our violent crimes, which we see as a positive sign and evidence of of some of the work we're doing paying off, especially after a particularly violent 2020.
Thanks for the presentation.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation as well. Two questions, how many more officers do we need to be fully staffed?
So at this moment, again, 284 would be our authorized number. I believe we are about 12 to 13 short. If you factor in retirements, we're actually seeking to hire about 14 in February.
Okay. I mean, it's we're always chasing our tail. I mean, you know, it's it's just where we're at.
And we are not naive. An agency our size is going to have cyclical turnover. And we will always be striving to keep that, which is why you'll hear me say we kind of have to keep the foot on the gas when it comes to hiring and keeping people in the pipeline.
Yeah, for sure. One of the things I wanted to ask about when we talk about, and this this isn't necessarily crime, but through COVID, we've heard a lot about suicide rate and things of that nature. Do you have what our suicide rate is based on what we see year over year and if what that looks like comparative?
Yeah, and and we've published some of these and we have, and I, for number purposes, we're down 19% from last year. And it was 31 the previous year and 25 this year. And those are ones that come through our. So we are seeing a decrease in that trend. And again, an emphasis we need to make because for us, we're just a piece of that puzzle, our community partners, especially when it comes to two on one helpline, early intervention, some of the veterans outreach programs we have, we can't stress those enough. Operation Hope Fund through the link and different things that are happening, we can't encourage people to use that enough because again, resources are there and sometimes it's just a matter of people identifying where those resources are at. And it may not be you that needs it, but it may be somebody you know, and the ability to steer them that direction is important. So we can keep that in a going in a positive direction.
Thank you for all the information. I think it's so critical that you're in front of us at least once a year with this stuff. It's just as we grow comes new challenges. And I know our population is growing and so it's comparative with the numbers, but it's still, you know, we're we're getting to be a big city. And so we see some of the challenges that come along with that, but there's so much preventative we can do as citizens ourself, you know, you know, see something, say something and all of the things. So you guys do a fabulous job and it's, I mean, it's so awesome to live in a community where you have the support of your city council and the mayor and the governor and all those things. You know, I just couldn't imagine being an officer anyways, let alone being in one in a city that wants to defund you. So it's just really unfortunate place for others to be in. But thank you and to your entire staff and team, regardless if you're on the street or doing other work. Like I said, it's just a basic function that we expect and so thank you for that.
Yeah, one of our recruit officers who came from a different part of the country had done their research and said one of the primary reasons for coming to Sioux Falls was a strong local government that supported law enforcement. So I think that's a testament to this council as well and the mayor's office.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great. And it'll be interesting to see, you know, like I mentioned, the budget stuff, if you haven't watched it, please do. There's gobs of money being thrown around everywhere and so it'll be interesting to see where all that lands, but clearly law enforcement is a priority for the state as well. So it'll be interesting to see where that goes.
Counselor Kiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, can you tell me, are thefts from cars classified as burglaries or where do they?
They're classified as larcenies.
As larcenies.
And so, but they can be burglaries are kind of a an occupied burglary versus an unoccupied burglary is still a burglary, so to speak, from a unoccupied storage building. It's a difference between burglary first and burglary third and a bunch of nuance in between. So within that burglary number would be quite a bit of nuanced information that would have to be mined to really give you a strong picture. We still have very few occupied residential burglaries that take place within our community. But again, as the trends show, there's enough people breaking into things that stealing stuff they shouldn't, that that those numbers are up. If people would choose to stop doing that, we'd be just fine with that.
Right. And regarding the stolen vehicles, is is there a way to determine how many of those stolen vehicles are insured vehicles?
We could dig into that information, but the vast majority, and you'll see this now with with changing automotive technology, like the key fob component where there's no longer a key. And I don't know, I I'm somewhat obsessive compulsive when it comes to that key element. I double check it because it kind of allows you to leave it in your car sometimes if you don't realize it's there or leave, you know, your key behind. And I think again, a lot of what we're seeing is just some negligence and some carelessness when it comes to that. And again, we are not Mayberry. You cannot leave your keys in your ignition and expect good things to happen. The reality is that at some point this will catch up with you and your car will be stolen. And we just want people to protect themselves and protect that and just make sure that they're they're being wise with their decisions.
Well, my my thought is that insurance companies could certainly help us out with that aspect. If you leave your keys in your vehicle, you you're uninsured.
Yep.
I mean, insurance companies do it all the time, higher rates for smokers or at least.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And then going to your out of state hires or other communities, they could be in state, but from other communities. So is is there some city specific formal update training that is going that they need to go, they're required to go through upon their hire?
So they'll have in house training of several weeks that will follow state laws, city ordinances, our policy and procedure, our way of doing training, our way of from firearms to driving to defensive tactics to everywhere in between. So there is along with other city orientation. In fact, when I went in to check on the group today, they were receiving ADA law from our our city attorney team. So there's basically a way to take that training that we give to all our new recruits, take some of the academy stuff, which is redundant to what they already know and kind of push that down. It's a basically a more advanced student who's more open to learning and as you see sometimes, they're still getting all the meat of the information with some of the stuff that's already an acquired or a skill they already possess.
Are they paired with mentors for a period of time?
As soon as we hire an officer, whether they're new or brand new to law enforcement or certified, they have a mentor assigned to them, which walks them through the process. And we even have mentors that are assigned and available for their spouses to help them acclimate to our community, acclimate to our department and really make the transition as smooth as possible. But again, I stress again, with all that being said, there is a standard and doesn't matter who you are or where you're from, you will fall within our standard and within our culture. Our, again, the right numbers are important, not just numbers.
Are they are they paired with mentors even when they're on patrol in a vehicle?
When they're on patrol and then with with their training officers, which sustain and go through that. And then again, with each officer, it's a little bit different. Some rely and need a lot more and some are are pretty quick to take to it. And they still go through that 15 month probationary period that all hires go through. So whether you're certified or brand new, there's still a 15 month probation that you have to see through.
Good to and good to know and thank you for completing your due diligence on that because we do have a great culture here in the city that we want to maintain.
Absolutely.
Good job. Thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Chief. First, with the numbers, the 19 and 20 numbers are full year and then they're through October and the 21.
I should have clarified that. In the presentation, the numbers that were grabbed were all through October.
Okay, so it's a.
So it's apples to apples.
Gotcha.
A little bit different when we don't do it a year in sebation, but I think what you'll see going forward is I'd like to touch these numbers at least twice a year. How we do that is probably a first quarter and a fourth quarter maybe moving forward just to kind of give that apples to apples comparison.
No, and sometimes we get off as the public because we hear more in the news and we wonder, are we out of whack or where where are we at? And because all of the 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 numbers are are important to the community, it was it affects people's lives.
And we have the the daily press briefing component, too, which is we are are daily providing that information out there. And again, sometimes I think people only consume their news just from that press briefing. And if you want to find something bad to see in the news every day, we can, we can find it for you, you know, but it's just something that I think we have to put some context to numbers and into what we're seeing.
One of the things you talked about, or let's do this first. Out of those people who are coming from out of state, are they being hired into management ranks or are they starting all at that officer level? Do we see people applying at the sergeant and the captain lieutenant captain levels?
In our our contract structure, our structure, they start as an officer. In fact, they start from the bottom of the seniority totem pole and have to work their way up just like anybody else we'd hired. One from the group this week was a sergeant in Georgia and he starts now as as the bottom of his class. And they understand that there's a bit of a rank structure. You've seen in other agencies where sometimes management can be brought in laterally, but they're coming in at that officer level.
You talked about the right applicants and getting people who are qualified in the in the system. Talk to me about the diversity of the applicants because I saw the class picture from this week.
Yep.
And I think other agencies did a better job, at least in this group of, you know, in their diversity plan. So as part of that marketing, what are we doing or what is it going to take to diversify the department?
So we've reached out to some different metro areas and then kind of take an assessment of what those results give us. Because the reality is, is that while we want to recruit nationally, we still want to recruit strongly locally. And again, the numbers that we're seeing and how we're seeing it and how we really tinker with that to get our applicants to have a more diverse background is the million dollar question. And if I knew it, I'd get a million dollar consulting job. So here's kind of some of the things we're looking at, especially from a local standpoint, is really how we make connections with youth right now that really maybe won't bear substantial fruit till 10 years down the road. Because for many, sometimes who are in this hiring group or this age, there may be a distrust of law enforcement. Law enforcement may not be seen as a career that they want to pursue. And so we focus our efforts now towards young people and say, okay, how can we partner with you and your community and say, hey, we want you as part of our team? How can we build these positive positive our positive relationships? And that's really the question. And I think you'll see some programs coming from us in 2022 where we really place an emphasis on how we're connecting with young people within our community. Because at the end of the day, it is very nice to have applicants from other parts of the country. They recognize what we have here is special. But ultimately, we're looking for more people within our community who want to say, I want to serve, I want to represent my community and I want to be a part of the Sioux Falls Police Department. So that's going to be a challenge. You are 100% correct. And again, we're looking at ways to kind of reach out and say within our own community, how can we can we build partnerships that make this happen?
I'm going to stay away from the unsecured firearms that got me in trouble the last time, so I'll.
Well, I'll say we should we should secure our firearms. There we go. They should not be left unsecured.
One other thing I want to talk a little bit about is since we've added the body cameras and the information, it would be nice, not today, but in a a presentation in the future of taking us through what is the policy? How is it if something bad happens? When is that video released? It's one place that that we lag behind as a state because there aren't any state statutes that cover it. And so we're covered by our internal policy. I think it would be interesting for us to kind of be briefed on what what if something happens, when is it released? How is it released? Who's storing it? How long are we storing it? Just kind of take us through that that part of it because that was kind of our delay to get into the body cameras of, okay, what are we going to do it? How many people do we need? We're adding extra people to handle some of that data. So at at some point in 2022, I think it'd be a good informational to take us through that process of, you know, rather than something bad happens and people are screaming, we want this information. I'd like to know what the policy is on the front end so I can say, hey, they're following the policy. This is how we're going to do it. You know, the event happens, this goes here, it goes here, and then 30 days it may be reviewed or it may be released or, you know, so that we know that it's going through that process.
Yeah, very good. It'd be a great topic for informational in the future. So I can tell you this body cams have been an amazing tool, not just from the evidentiary standpoint, but from the review standpoint. It's extremely nice and honestly, it's it's just an accepted practice of doing business now and one that that we've seen its value from time and time again. So we can expand on that.
I think it protects the officer more than that says, hey, I followed and I did this. And it's amazing how criminals change their mind, how quickly when they see the video and you show it back to them. Oh, wait, I did say that and do that and I was under the influence or memories get a lot better when it's on video.
It's a great tool.
Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, thank you for your work and thank your officers from us as well. As you said, you know, you're going to have a lot of data that you can mine biannually, quarterly, so on and so forth. Know that you have a council that's going to support you when you come here. So if you need something midstream, and I think you understand this, and I'm just preaching to the choir here, come to us midstream before budget season, before, you know, we get behind the eight ball and 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 keep on keeping on.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Counselor Selberg?
One quick question. Was there an age, is there a max for you can't apply for the job or?
I'm going to.
We've talked about that before.
Maybe misquote it, but there is a a max ceiling on the age, which just basically comes back to the pension requirements and things of that nature. It's it's somewhere in the mid 40s. I can get that answer for you, but I'll come back, come back for you. Yeah. I was curious, I think it's come up before, I couldn't remember what it was. Thanks.
Other questions? Chief, I I just have a couple of questions. First off, you talked about the overall, the general, the total population of Sioux Falls, the total numbers. Let's boil it down to small areas or neighborhoods. And could you expand a little bit about what neighborhoods, what areas and what problems you see coming forward and how the council could maybe help you with some of that?
Sure. If we look at different parts of town, and this is not new to just right now, but even back when I first started as a police officer, different parts of town had different crime profiles. You know, southwest was more, if you were a southwest cop, you were going to more shopliftings and accidents and family disputes, things of that nature. Northeast maybe had a little more alcohol-fueled calls or calls that centered around domestic disturbances. Same with the northwest, and the southeast had a different profile as well, too. So I think you'll see, again, people ask what the most destructive drug to society is. I'll tell you, alcohol, hands down, drives the majority of our police work. Obviously, meth is bad, fentanyl is bad. But again, we sometimes overlook the effects that alcohol has on police work. And I think we've seen in some of these neighborhoods, particularly that struggle with alcohol, we see just a higher call volume, and that's everything from nuisance calls to violent crime and everything in between. And it's just something, especially as we work towards building safer neighborhoods, building neighborhood community associations that are engaged, because ultimately, the residents have a big say in what happens in their neighborhood and promoting that growth. But, you know, again, with our core neighborhoods, I think it's going to be important for us to be proactive in making sure that our law enforcement's there, but also our community engagement is high. And the community engagement itself from the residents there is high as well. So it's almost like, if you go back five, seven years ago, Pettigrew Heights was the main talking point, as far as the crime trends in Pettigrew Heights. We've seen that now shift more towards the east side, where call volume is higher. In Pettigrew Heights, call volume has actually gone down over the years. And again, we'll see these trends change throughout. A lot of it has to do with just concentration of people. Where the majority of our people are concentrated in density, that's sometimes where we're going to see higher call volume, too. And so, again, that comes back to planning, and that comes back to everything else, is all the different city departments work together, and we come up with comprehensive plans to really affect the quality of life for people in a positive way.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your forward thinking on trying to handle the trends as they come forward. My last question would be, what can we do to help you and your force?
I will say this from a community standpoint, and again, just taking through the lens of some of the new officers we've hired. Again, we have a unique position here of a community that supports us, a council that supports us, a mayor's office that supports us, and the job is being done by that group. Again, I don't have to sell the department when new officers are looking at us. Our community sells itself, and it's our job to fill that role and sustain the growth of what we're doing, sustain the efforts that we've had, and really, as I said earlier about hiring to keep our foot on the gas and not become complacent and be making the necessary financial commitment, but commitment of hours and people to make sure we're sustaining that quality of life in Sioux Falls.
Okay, thank you. Last chance for questions. Seeing none, thank you very much. Very informative.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. You have up to five minutes for a public comment on any of the two things we covered today.
So I'm going to tell you how your crime gets lower in high-crime areas. Chief Toome is a good guy. He never supported Chief Burns. How council members get involved in our neighborhoods is you tell the neighborhoods that they can police our neighborhoods. I have policed my own neighborhood in Pettigrew. And I get a lot of times saying, well, where's council members at? Why are they not reaching out to us? Why are they not helping us on the crime? I have pastors that come in and get their hands dirty and will just go. From people with knives cutting people's throats open, to machetes that got sliced in their backs, to a girl cutting herself and wants to commit suicide because she just had an abortion that I had to take the knife away from. So get your hands dirty. That's what this is all about. People want to say they're Christians, and I tell the pastors the same thing. You're Christians, you get your hands dirty. That's what the Bible says. So councils can go out there and get their hands dirty, too. My calls for services down by fourteen hundred and thirty-two from last year. Needlessly to say, we had to build up the citizens to trust the police and the police to trust the citizens. That was a big thing there. And then, you know, as I know, is when you call the police, you've got to testify against these people. Some of these individuals won't do it. So we'll try to put up cameras. We try to put up police cameras to monitor it. Next year's election is going to be on crime in Pettigrew. So I want you to get ready for next election for crime with the police department and crime for Pettigrew. This is going to be a fun race. I keep telling you, and sitting here and telling you all the issues when the police department makes me come up here, because they can't come here. So when officers tell me about, Sierra, we have issues on this, Sierra, we have issues on alcohol on this one, Sierra, can you please bring up this, Sierra, Sierra, can you please bring up this? And nobody listens to my mouth, then election time is coming up here. I want to stress that I oversee eight hundred fifty-two properties and thirty-two hundred people in my neighborhood association. If I would run today as council, I would win. But I'm not running, because when you're council member, your hands are tied. This chief is a wonderful police chief. We have our differences with some of these officers on the streets. That's just a thing that we have to just deal with. It is not, it is very hard to get the crime down, but it can happen. If you have all of these people that's involved that want to do it, you've got to get your police that want to do it, because it's a lot of time-consuming. It's a lot of calls for police. I've called the police about fifty times in one week on Eleventh and Summit, but we got it cleaned up. And we have a judicial system that puts these people to jail on trespassers, and so we don't have to deal with those people. What I'm going to say is, and I'll bring this up at public input, a city council is, you know, we've got to look at the Bishop Dudley here with the police calls, with the police arriving there. Twenty percent of the call volume is very high. So I want to thank the police for going to those calls, but let me tell you something. I call Los Angeles, California, and their shelters, and they're seven to nine percent